Hey, good evening, folks. We'll call this committee the whole Public Works Environmental Services and Facilities meeting to order. Today's Monday, September the 17th. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda? Counselor Schimmel or Mr. Packwood all in favor? That is Carrie, thank you. The next item on the agenda is disclosure of peculiar interest in the general nature thereof. I have disclosure this evening. That's with item 11A, the closed session, specifically the JRDR drain, and my mother and father-in-law are respondents to that before the drainage referee, and that disclosure has been filed with the deputy clerk. Any others? Counselor Schimmel?
I have 7E, the Walker Street update, just continuing on with staying out of the discussion on that.
Okay, and has that been filed with the deputy clerk? Perfect. Anything here else? Okay, perfect. So we'll move on to item four, and that's business arising from the previous Public Works Environmental Services and Facilities Committee minutes, if any. Does anyone have any business arising this evening? Okay, so I'm gonna... Are you okay there, Counselor Schimmel? Yes, okay.
Did you catch up, Jerry?
Yes, I got it out there.
Good job, good job. We have nothing but the...
So, this evening, we do have a delegation that will be as per the agenda at 7:30 PM. So, provided we have enough meeting content to survive until 7:30, and I think we do, we'll hear from the gentleman from the Lawless family concerning the end of the roll-ups. And that item, their delegation pertains to item 7A. We've no discussion items listed at number six, and we'll move on to our action information item 7A, the Spencerville Legion sewer charges, and with this item, there is a recommendation from staff. So, kick things off. Oh, Counselor Schimmel?
So, unfortunately, I'm gonna have to vote against this recommendation. I feel that...
Counselor, if I could, would you care to move the motion so as to further your...
Oh, yeah, yeah, sorry, I can do that.
Okay, thank you. And a secondary? Mr. Packwood?
Is that part of the...
Oh, well, that's great. So, speakers against?
So, my concern with this, with this motion is not that I don't want to assist the Legions in any way, it's, it's the effect that, the original effect that this could have with a lot of other non-for-profits in the area. And until the study's done, that dictates maybe better charges, or if our current structure i- is good, I don't feel that offering them the discount at this time is very, very money-conscious thing to do. Unfortunately, I think that we need to definitely look at how the billing is done, but I really am concerned that the, if we do this adjustment, and that the costing has been leaned on residential grid payers, so that's a concern. So, I'll be voting against this motion until the study can be completed.
Thank you very much. Any other speakers? For or against?
I was just gonna say, I, I have a tendency in favor of it. I think it's a, a stopgap till year end, the next two quarters, to alleviate the, the Legion's concern until the staff can get a better handle on the, the formula that was put in place a long time ago. I, I too am concerned that it's the domino effect of what Counselor Schimmel pointed out, that other people are gonna jump on the bandwagon, but when I see what Cardinal, you know, Cardinal's only two, like, two and a half times, whereas they're jumping, this is five times. There must have been a reason for it. I can think of, think of the sum of my head, but I'm not gonna speculate, but I, I think it, what staff is asking, that they're, with the recommendation is, let's use this now as a stopgap to alleviate some of their concerns until we get them on the formula, why it's so, and why they're higher than other people in the area, and I think it'll give a little bit more time to bring back some, some not even, not even assessment, that's, that's, they're already in the weeds, and I, I'm not, again, I know what you're saying about everybody's jumping on the bandwagon and we have to, but I thought it was a sensible compromise under the circumstances, and, and until we go to where as to our fourth pick, that's right.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Mayor?
Okay, so, a bit of history here. Quite a number of years ago, when it first came on council, the sewer and water rates were just part of the regular tax bill, and we collected them. There was no such thing as sewer and water rates, we just collected taxes. The provincial government made it very clear that we had to separate those costs from the general taxation, because people that live on Heiman Road, for example, do not want to be paying for water in Sewer in Cardinal or Sewer in Spencerville. So, they were mandated that we had to have a mechanism of running these systems, so that they were user-paid systems. So, we had to develop a mechanism to try to determine how that would work. So, we knew what our costs were, and we took the approach that a residential unit would be one, and then higher users would be multiples of one. And you can see that we assessed the element, the school, as a five, so in other words, five times a residential unit, and so was Spencerville Legion, five times a residential unit. And then he said, in the, in the letter that we have from the president, he says, "All others are assessed at less, including the arena, which might be two or three times the residential, and the Drummond Building might be two or three times the residential." But in our, in, in other words, what I'm saying is, the motivation behind this five times a residential was trying to tie the rate to the usage. Now, maybe we've got it right, maybe we've got it wrong, and after many, many years, now we have this recommendation or this request from the Legion to reduce theirs multiplier to two and a half times the residential unit. Well, actually, they're just asking for a, they're just asking for a reduction, and the staff is saying that they're prepared to recommend an adjustment down to two and a half times the residential unit, and then they're prepared to do a little bit of a rate study to see how appropriate we might be with our multipliers. So, I'm, I'm of a mind to approve this recommendation. I know that all of these Legions, including one in Cardinal, are having financial problems, and I'm prepared to cut them a little bit of slack here, because I think this recommendation is to s- to adjust it to two and a half times the residential unit for the third and fourth quarters of 2018. So, I'm prepared to do that, provided that they find a way of bringing their sewer and water account up to full payment. So, I'm, I'm gonna vote in favor of it, but I would like the staff to attempt to work with them to get them up, current on their account. And I am looking forward to what kind of a study we might perform to see that, if, if we have other balancing that needs to be done throughout the system. I think if I recall correctly, there's only something like 150 users on the system. Can I get some help here? What's the total number of users on this system?
I believe it's 147, Mr. Mayor.
Ah, not bad from memory, about 20 years ago. So, 147 users, and, I mean, does not quite cut the cake, we've gotta recover the cost for those 147 users. I mean, that's as simple as that. So, anyway, I'm gonna vote in favor of the motion, and hope that when we do the, the reassessment in time for the 2019 rates, that we get a better handle on whether we're right or wrong, and if we make it very clear to the Legion that this is only for the two quarters, the third and the fourth quarter, I think that'll sort of show them that we're at least listening to their requests. So, that's what I meant.
Okay, thank you very much. I'm trying to say nothing. Was that a response to, or...
No, I just had some...
Go ahead.
So, my other concern is, we had, we set up the grants and donations process for these organizations to tap into, and they did not make an application this year. Now, the mill, who also struggles to pay their bills, made their request and was granted their, their request. So, we're not apples to apples here, like, it's, it's, I'm, I'm just, anyways, I'm not sold on it. Like, if they, they were in dire need to try and catch up, then they should have at least made a attempt to apply for something through the grants and donations process.
Okay, thank you. Deputy Mayor?
Are we gonna be able to do this for this, the, the rest of this year, and then with that, take a look at the cost for the 2019, which is gonna end up increasing every residence' rate to cover that cost for future years if it goes on, or is it just, just for this year, and then they know they're going back to the five times?
That's how, that's how I interpret it.
I just wanna be sure, because it's...
To the CIO?
Thank you, Counselor. I think the intent from staff was that the, this lower rate would be for the two quarters. To be truthful, to be 100% accurate, we're probably not gonna get that rate study done in time for the first quarter billing. So, you know, we should potentially let the Legion know that we would be going back to the five times rate for that first quarter. I'm just thinking of timing with new council and trying to get a study like this done in, in time to do the billing in March is probably, might be, might be a little difficult.
Trying to think how to phrase this. We will have to adjust, I think, on the basis of what we've seen so far. We are going to have to adjust the entire sewer and water rates across the system, and we've traditionally done that, if I recall correctly, in time for the first billing in the new year. Sometimes we can slide the final decision into January and still catch the first billing. So, I think that the CIO makes a good point. We'll just, and, and that's what the recommendation is, is that the adjustment to two and a half times is just for these two quarters, and we'll have to see where things fit in the next, in the next round, because there will be rate increase almost for sure.
Through you, do, do we know, look, we know that Cardinals is, is not using the two and a half based on the, their, the water rates, I sup- I suspect, the comment that you made here, it's a, shows less than 2.5 times residential consumption for, based on metering for the Cardinal Legion, but we have no metering here, so we don't know. Do we have any idea what rate that it would be, to me in my mind, because it operates very much like the Jade Palace, as a restaurant, it serves people, and has bar and wash rooms. What's the difference between, what is the rate of the Jade Palace compared to the Delta?
No, and, and to be, I mean, if I may, to the Chair, you know, to be perfectly blunt about it, there, there really hasn't been much review of this rate system through the 40 years, 30 years we've had this system in place. So, what the Ed State said in his action item, we couldn't find the documentation to tell us what was done in 1991. It, it's time to take a look at it, and, you know, even Jade Palace particularly, when you bring that one up particularly, was a residence when this system went in, not a restaurant. So...
I thought we adjusted these since 2006?
I'm not saying it hasn't been adjusted, I'm just saying it was done as a one-off.
Oh, okay.
Right? Not, not part of an overall system review, so...
Agree with the Mayor's point of view? Okay, thank you. Push your camera.
I, I, I concur. I, I'd want to see the rate go back up in, in January, or the new year.
Okay, and that's as per the, the recommendation from us?
Correct.
Okay, any more speakers to the motion? Okay, all in favor and all opposed, the motion carries, so thank you very much. So, move to 7B, unless a reason? No reason. The reason for 7B is the arena season end review. Mr. Spencer?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Back in April Admin and Finance, the Mayor has requested a, a review of the arenas, and so what you have, Spencerville Arena, their normal season runs September, so these figures represent September 17th and 217 till April of 218. And then the Ingredion Center is August of 217 to May, the end of May of, of 218. So, the figures that show are just the operating, they don't include the capital, and they don't include what the budgeted amounts were, because they were in two separate budget years. They just give the actual as to what costs were incurred during that time span. And I just briefly talked a couple, about a couple of extra expenditures, and then just indicated about the maintenance agreements that we have at both arenas for some things, but then obviously with the newer arena at the Ingredion Center, we have some more maintenance agreements there, so they are listed.
Okay. Well, thanks very much. Mr. Mayor?
Okay, so, first thing, to the Chair, if I may, first thing I wanna get absolutely clear in my mind, on the briefing note on the front page, where you're making special note of the Spencerville Arena line item 5207, the $4,000, which was a shaft seal, I take it, if I, if I'm correct, that that, that was listed as an operating cost?
That is correct.
Okay, and the same with the ingredient cost?
That is correct. As well as the maintenance items, they're not listed?
Yeah.
But that's there under, each arena has a maintenance agreement line?
Yeah.
And those items are, are listed there?
So, Mr. Chair, if I can, then, through you, I just, I just wanna know, for example, and, you know, I know we have this ongoing discussion about operating arenas, but I may know that in, for example, the Spencerville Arena, so we have a net operating deficit of $76,498, and on the Ingredion Center, we have a net operating deficit of $102,433. So, that means after all revenues collected and being applied to all expenses, we have a net operating loss of $178,932, call it $179,000. So, the taxpayers, just so that's understood, the cost to the taxpayers of the operations is $179,000. Then we have capital expenses on top of that, which is, is, Mr. Spencer has already indicated that's a separate budget, we understand that. So, it's just, in, in my opinion, it's important that we, that we track these things and know what these facilities are costing us. I know now that with the Prescott Arena being out of commission, we will be attracting more revenue into our systems, and if I can, just proceed a little bit further here, because later on in the meeting, we have a, an acknowledgement that we're gonna try to provide additional hours. So, my question is gonna go something like this. Will, will the additional hours give us net revenue, or will they give us net expenditures? In other words, will it cost us more to provide those additional hours than we incurred costs? That's the question I'm trying to ask. Just so that I get a handle on where we're gonna be for the 2019 report.
Would you like a response to that, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
Staff believes that we will actually incur more expenses than we will achieve an additional revenue.
We do, right?
Yeah, we, we think, and I think Mike had a arena usage report that addresses it to some extent later in its agenda. We'll have more games, and so we'll probably have a lot more people in the buildings, which should lead to an increase in our canteen sales, which is a good thing, but it also leads to an increase in the, in building maintenance. It'll have to be cleaned more often, we will, especially with the junior games, be looking at, at flooding the ice between periods, not just at the end of the game. So, there's costs associated with running the ice resurfacing machines, potentially on tournament or game days where we have back-to-back-to-back-to-back games, we may need to bring in a student or, or a part-time person to assist through those very busy times. So, we can't quantify it yet, but, but we don't expect to see an additional net revenue.
No. And so, Mr. Chair, if I can, through you, I, I just wanna make it clear, I'm not, now I understand that this is a service we provide, but I, I just wanna reiterate again that my dream is to find these two buildings on which we, we spend $190,000, $179,000, is to find these, these two buildings, get a greater, broader use over the course of the year. I know that during the hockey time, and when the ice is in, we get good percentage uses of the time, but my dream is to see us getting revenue out of these buildings in the off-season, if I can put it that way.
Yep. So, thank you for that. Counselor Schimmel?
I don't know the exact figures, but I recall back when I threw this issue up about other, other municipalities paying their, their share when they don't have their own facilities, like arenas and pools and so forth. I looked that up, I let it die because it didn't get carried, but anyway. At the time, I, I brought forth an issue and a statement, and we compared the two, they had two arenas of Smith Falls. In our, our arenas, we noted at that time were about 200,000 less per year to operate than what they were in Smith Falls. And we, we saw that at that time as a positive, the way you think it was in here. The other thing, the, the Smith Falls was receiving certain percentages of the operating costs from outlying townships. And if we look at the bigger picture, and we look at Ganon Oakley, the hassle they had with Thousand Islands, these Thousand Islands, they were paying something at one time like $85,000, $86,000 per year to Ganon Oakley. The prices went up to operational costs of about $120,000, or whatever, they want $121,000, and Mr. Batista says, "I'm not paying it," the agreement was originally, and of course, the mayor, Chuck, I guess her name, and she wanted the, the same formula and so forth, but they reached an understanding. So, we look, and I know, I know there are other places like Prescott, and I know Augusta, I'm, I'm looking at Augusta and so forth, they're getting, they're paying $15,000 a year, they just started doing so, access to our pools and to arenas. Thousand Islands is paying $86,000, and they kicked when it was raised to $121,000. And I know that Kittley pays a certain percentage to Smith Falls, and they also pay in the Sothen, to Brock, and I'm sure it's a heck of a lot more than what... So, I think we're doing well to run these, these two arenas as efficiently as we are. Most of these facilities, whether the pools or arenas, I don't think there's a moneymaker, I wouldn't think anywhere, maybe Maple Leaf Gardens, but that's, that's, I'm talking about within municipalities and so forth. I don't think they're moneymakers. They're there to appeal to people, to provide recreational facilities as a draw for other people to come. Pools are open, we've got two pools, three, a baby pool also, and our canteen. So, they're, they're, to me, positive. And I recall that, that we, we looked at it at the time and said, "Oh, boy, that's good, we see that our operating costs were about $200,000 less than Smith Falls at that time, when they had two arenas." And they were getting money from other townships. I think Mr. Nashville, I thought it was, and so forth. So, anyway, that's just my, just answer. They don't make money necessarily, and I don't, I don't know how you, unless, I don't know how you can rent them in the summertime, but that's, anyway, I'll stop there. It's, it's a tough song there. Thank you.
Deputy R. Chell?
Well, I mean, we have, have to help our neighbors, and both these are kids that are playing in our rink anyway, and yes, it's a, certainly is a budget that is there, and we, other than starting to work towards the contracts with other communities more than what we've got with Augusta, and it took a long time to get what we got, so, and which is better than what we had, which was nothing, so I think it's a, it's a need to add.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Schimmel? Thank you. Mr. Packwood, Mr. Schellner? Okay, great. Thank you very much. Mr. Spencer, we'll move right into arena ice usage.
Okay. So, I've tried to, in a short-term way, try to explain for somebody that may not know the hockey lingo and everything else. So, I mean, at the end of the day, South Gumbel Minor Hockey basically has had the best of, of all worlds when they've had the three rigs, because they've been able to take ice at all three, and they've been able to take it when, when they want it. For example, on weekends, they wouldn't want to start before eight o'clock, on Sundays, they don't want to start till nine o'clock. Now, with the Prescott ring being closed, they're starting at seven o'clock at both of our rigs, because they don't have an option. That option was always there for them, but they didn't want it. So, I feel that I've worked well with the user groups. Obviously, South Gumbel Minor Hockey is the biggest, the Rito Kings. The only one that we weren't able to accommodate was the Prescott Figure Skating Club, and it's just because we don't have any prime time ice that was available for them, I suggested that they reach out to the Spencerville Skate Club and see if they can join forces there, because the Spencerville Skate Club numbers are, are low as far as registration, and that's been recommended to them in the past, and for whatever reasons, the associations chose not to merge together. So, some of the groups that were at our facilities last year handed back ice prior to, all our contracts were pretty much signed on June 1st. So, South Gumbel had handed back some ice time, and, and so we were in the midst of trying to sell that to, to other associations and that. So, when the Prescott ring closed, then South Gumbel got back some of the ice that they had handed back. So, in the long run, for, for Spencerville, we're really only renting an additional three hours of ice now that the Prescott ring is closed.
Three hours per week?
Per week. Seven till eight o'clock in the morning on, on each Saturday and Sunday morning, and a 10 to 11 slot on Friday nights. So, the Spencerville rink is, basically is booked from 4:30 Monday to Friday till either 10:30 or 11 o'clock at night during the week, and then they're booked on Saturdays and Sundays from seven o'clock in the morning till 10:30 at night, both nights. So, there really isn't any ice available, unless, for youth hockey, there isn't any. You might get a men's league team that would maybe rent 10:30 to 11:30, we might use that as the drop-in rate that we have periodically. So, that's all we have in Spencerville. In Cardinal, we have four and a half additional hours that we have rented. So, in, in Cardinal now, the ice is rented Monday to Friday, 4:30 till 11:00. On all nights except Thursday, it goes till 10:30. On Saturdays and Sundays, they start at seven as well, just like over here, and they go once, they go to 11 o'clock each night. So, again, we have no more available ice, but a lot of the associations that use ice with us have given, given back some of their ice. Everyone's under a contract, so, for example, the Rito Thunder Girls Hockey, they rent ice from September the 15th till March the 15th. It's always the same ice slot, and they get that throughout the whole season, and they end up handing some ice back when they can't use it, so South Gumbel's picked up those ice slots. That's why I've said the associations have worked well together.
Great. Anything else on that? Mr. Spencer?
No, I just briefly mentioned, and I know Debbie already did, about the, the added maintenance?
Right.
Because of the attendance in the, in the facilities will be more on some nights over others.
Great. Well, thanks. You know, it's an added dimension of complexity for you and your staff, you know, these, these external factors, and, and you folks are making it work for a lot of people who are planning on playing hockey, and the disruption is, you know, very minimal, I think, to, to the organizations, and that's to your credit. And so, what is, you know, it's, it's obviously a tremendous upset for the community of Prescott and for South Grenville, they're, the Leo... for the community of Prescott and for South Grenville, the Leo being closed. But making lemonade out of lemons is obviously your specialty. So, well-handled to this point, I'd say. Go ahead.
I'm through you to Mike. There, the added town fees, are they being charged on any of these rentals?
Not for, well, the men's league, or sorry, the rec league. They are residents that live in the township. So, the contract is with the resident that lives in the township. So, right now, no.
Just, you know, considering the Walker House situation, where we have seniors that are members there, we refund their added town fee to the town of Prescott.
Mm-hmm.
I think there's some sort of a balance to be reached here in terms of possibly maybe getting it waived so that we're not refunding it or until such time as their ring is, you know, some sort of a give and take here, because we're certainly reaching out to help Prescott. And maybe this would be the time for them to do a give. Don't want to date there?
No. Okay, so, I doubt it is. Thank you. Uh, Counselor Smell?
So, just a few things that I wanted to clarify. Some will be through staff, some will be through, through Mr. Spencer. Will public skating be affected by any of this? No? Okay. And I see here on the back page, on the first paragraph, that spectators will be allowed on the walking track for certain games. And I remember this being quite the issue when we first got on. And I wonder when this became used as spectator, when there was such a big deal before it was. And why are we allowing it now?
What, through the chair, to Counselor Smell. When there is paid admission into hockey events, which in this case will be the Junior Sea Games on Saturday nights, the door, we lock the side door, so everyone has to come in the front door and pay admission. So, we lock, we have always locked... Last year, we had three events that had paid admissions, and we locked the walking track during those events so that the people that were coming in didn't have to say, "Well, I'm not here to watch the event. I'm here to walk." So, we just closed the walking track down, and we posted well in advance, so everyone knows. And then, people are permitted to watch from up above during that. Now, the Junior Seas are still contemplating whether or not they want that. They may not. So, people may not be watching from upstairs during the Junior Sea Games once the league games start. But if they are, then they will be permitted during the Junior Sea Games, because the walking track will be closed.
Um, the other, so how many times will the walking track be affected for these games? Will it be an increase as opposed to last year?
Yes, but it's at a different timeframe, too. It's Saturday nights at eight-thirty. The walking track is only open till ten o'clock. So, it's really only affecting an hour and a half. Last year, when we had the three events, they were all-day events. So, if you average out the hours over the course of the winter, it's probably the last time, but it's just going to be more frequently, whether it be for less time on the Saturday night, it'll be for an hour and a half as opposed to twelve hours on a Saturday for a tournament.
And was there any way, does the Bob system, I can't remember if Bob system tracks, what time people are using the track, is it?
No, it does not.
No, so you don't have any idea how many residents it could possibly affect?
How many it could affect?
Yeah.
No.
That would use the track at that time, so it's good?
No, I don't.
Okay. And is this going to be, sorry, through you?
Yep.
Is this going to be continued on, like, through coming years? That the walking track will be continued to be utilized for spectators?
For this year, the contract for the Junior Seas is for this hockey season only.
Okay. And is there a kickback to the township for using that extra space?
No, there's not.
They charge an admittance at the door, though?
Yes, they do.
And where does that money go?
To the club.
All right, that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, gentlemen? Oh, Mr. Cameron. Well, I just want to get over there. Go ahead.
Okay, so I just wanted to get through the chair about two final points. And I may, it may be a bit repetitive, is what I said at early in the meeting. But I just wanted the council to know that on the Monday following the announcement that the Leo Boyven Arena would be closed, sent a letter, delivered a letter, actually, to the mayor and council of town of Prescott indicating our understanding of their situation and offering to provide any assistance that we could and inviting their recreation people to get in touch with our CIO or our recreation people. Now, I also know from talking to the CIO during that interim period of time that Mr. Spencer was immediately, as soon as the announcement was made, he was immediately trying to find up ways to create additional ice hours at our arenas. And he's announced here tonight what those additional hours have been. So, I want to thank him for that. And then, the last thing that I want to say is that I was very happy to be able to confirm with the CIO that Mr. Spencer made every arrangement that he could make to have the weekend of the Minjet Hockey Tournament cleared so that we had ice available. And so, we were completely able, if I'm correct, we were completely able to be able to host that big Minjet Tournament that is held every year in Prescott. It's quite a tournament. And I'm going to say this publicly. I'm very, very disappointed that the powers that be made the decision to move that tournament to Morrisburg. Because by doing so, all of the work that we've done to create extra ice time and to create extra availability, when they moved the tournament to Morrisburg, all of the economic benefit of that tournament blows out of our township. And, you know, we've made an effort here. So, I just want to put that out for what it's worth, because I think that our staff has worked very hard here.
Thank you for that. Uh, Counselor Morel, and then back to Debbie. Okay.
Just a question. How many people are allowed, or is that walking track set to hold at one time?
I don't have the clear number, but it's in the range of two-hundred-and-fifty to four-hundred people.
Static weight?
Yes.
Okay. After that thorough review, we'll move on to the seven D. That is James Street Rail Crossing Repair and Road Closure. And this is an information item. Uh, Mr. Grant, did you want to speak to that?
Just briefly, Mr. Chair. Ingredion is planned to perform that rehabilitation starting this Wednesday and completing on September thirtieth. It does require the partial closure of Victoria, or sorry, James Street, but won't impact, directly impact any residents. So, you can tell from the diagram attached what the truck routes will be. So, it should have minimal impact to that area.
Okay, thanks. Uh, any questions from committee? Counselor Smell?
Just a, it's a very brief note. I just want to make sure that the residents, I know the company's supposed to do that, but is there a way for us to follow up to make sure the residents are actually notified? Because I know that the route has a lot of youth that walk to the bus stops and stuff on there, so I'm a little concerned with those trucks taking those turns in there. With the amount of youth there, I just really would like to emphasize that, you know, to make sure those residents are notified when that's going to take place.
So, through the chair, we have already posted on the website. And we will confirm with Ingredion that all those particular residents have been notified. And if need be, we can drop off a notice at those locations.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. Anything else? Okay, thank you very much. Move to item seven E. And this is the Walker Street Reconstruction Contract Extension. And there is a recommendation here. So, before we hear the briefing note, committee, have you reviewed it? Is there anyone to move the recommendation?
Some.
By the mayor and a secretary, Mr. Cameron. Uh, Mr. Grant, did you want to speak to that yet?
Certainly, Mr. Chair. Obviously, this project was to begin early July with a completion date of November fifteenth. There have been some delays that have been somewhat out of the control of the contractor and others that maybe not so much that we've been, we've been working with. And it has come to our attention at our last site meeting that the project will not be able to be fully completed by that November fifteenth deadline. And that's why we've brought forth the recommendation that staff in our engineering firm be allowed to negotiate that contract extension with several of the conditions noted in that action item.
Okay. Thank you. So, we'll go, so Counselor Smell, so I'm going to participate per server disclosure. Counselor Morel, did you want to start?
Well, I'm not surprised, I guess. I don't want to put the director on this contract about raising something. I know we've always had, and the project had a project manager overseeing it, the eastern engineering and everything like this with this company. And I don't know whether, what it is, but they, they've... I just know from the naked eye and from talking to people in other areas and the experience with these guys and so forth. I don't know whether they, they always seem to be the low bidder. And I know that's basically our obligations, and it's usually considerably less. I don't know what the low bid was, how much, and I can't recall who the second bidder was, how much. And we seem to run into these problems, whether they don't have the crew or they're overpromising and under-delivering. We had a problem with them in Gil Street, if you'll recall. We had a problem with them getting the Heimlich Road Done, if you'll recall. They, I think there were some negotiations at the final phase when they low-bidded after the court. There had to be some give and take and change orders and all this stuff going on. And here we are, and I know that South Gumbel has had a heck of a time with them getting Lake Shore Drive Sewers in prior to the previous election in 2014, this kind of two-year project. And I have my theory that what they couldn't build an old-fashioned one-seater and so forth. But they always seem to be in the game, and they're, they always have to run into these problems. And they always, you know, I call it, this is a company that uses responsibility without accountability. And what I mean by that is they're responsible for it, but they're not accountable for it, because they can always point the finger, "Oh, it's that government," you know, "Well, they didn't get this permit," or "They didn't get that." And there's always an excuse for it. You know, it's like the guy that's an incompetent business owner. And he's blaming everything on, and putting his own business skills and so forth and went bankrupt. It's, but anyway, I have some questions here, and I try not to belabor the point, but I just, I, it sounds like they've got two more draws coming up this year. You're expecting two more draws to be paid. Am I right there by your says? Most of the amount that says minus a ten percent and a substantial portion of the anticipated transfer reserve were prior. But there was something about two, I saw something about two more draws, I thought, before the end and so forth. Can we hold those draws back besides a ten percent efficiency? The other one, the other question I have is, you're talking about, if they don't follow through with the June thirtieth deadline that we're instilling, and they want to go to the July the thirtieth that they want, or thirty-first, they're prolonging another. What, you're talking about, you know, a two-year period of negating them from bidding in any contracts in the township? I'm saying, why the two-year period? Could we maybe extend it longer, five to ten years? Could we just blacklist them all together from our, you know? Like, I just, somebody said, "These guys construct in the summer, litigate in the winter." You know?
Okay, I'll give the director an opportunity.
You know, I just, I may not ask it so much, but anyway, I just...
Mr. Grant?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. To answer the first question with respect to, we do anticipate that there will be two more payment certificates, one at least for September and October, potentially, depending if weather holds true. We can certainly hope that they can continue well into November and get as much completed as possible. With respect to the two-year period, we think that the two-year period is a reasonable period for them to become ineligible if they're unable to complete that versus a lengthier five-to-ten-year period may be very difficult to get into place. The two-year period was through our discussion with legal.
Okay, and so, so thank you. Was that the, was that all?
That's basically it, yeah.
So, and I just, and I appreciate that there may be frustrations. But I just encourage everyone to be mindful that we not presuppose the outcome of the ongoing work. And I'll leave it at that. Mr. Murray?
Okay, so a whole bunch of things, through the chair, if I may. And I move the recommendation, and I'm aligned to support it. I want to go back a step. Prior to this project starting, I had the same concerns as Counselor Morel. And I was worried about the contract extras and the change orders, which we might potentially be facing. And I asked if the staff would make sure that we had extra owner supervision and owner eyes on the job. And I'm happy to say that the discussions that we've had with staff indicate that the staff has been very, very diligent watching the performance of this contract. And the end result of, I think, that diligence is that up to this point, we've had no change orders issued on the contract, and we've had no contract extras. If I, do I have that much right, Mr. Grant? No change orders, no contract extras?
Through the chair, there have been a couple site instructions with some additional storm sewer, but nothing of any magnitude.
So, we're at the stage, and I understand, and I don't blame the engineering company, and I don't blame the contractor, that there was an awful lot of underground infrastructure that was not properly documented through no fault of ours, through no fault of the engineering firm, and through no fault of the contractor. And we've managed, I mean, the contractor could have come up to us for a lot of extras on the basis that that infrastructure, I think there was some fiber optic cable, some telephone cable, et cetera, that wasn't where it's supposed to be. And they had to work around that. It took extra time. So, now, they're asking extra time. And the recommendation doesn't really tie it down to how much time we're giving them. But I know from the briefing note that we're prepared to set a new completion date of June the thirtieth. And they're asking, I believe, till July the thirty-first. Is that right?
Through the chair, yeah, July thirtieth.
So, through the chair, do you think that that difference of opinion can be resolved? That's the first question.
Through the chair, I believe so.
All right, now, second question, if I may. They don't, in the briefing note, nor in their letter, do they indicate any willingness to work later in the season, weather providing? I can see what, from their letter, that what they're attempting to do is get the whole contract done up to a certain point, put on the first level of payment, and then call it quits for the winter and not go beyond that point. Have they indicated any willingness to go beyond that point, that geographical point, provided weather holds and they're not chased off the site?
Through the chair, my apologies for not clarifying that better. Certainly, the intent is to have everything completed except the second and final lift of asphalt to Helen Street. But weather permitting, the work will continue with the underground as long as, as long as possible.
Okay. That is helpful to me. And the other thing I just want to express, if I may, is I think we have to be mindful that once work on a job like this stops for the winter, it doesn't always get started as fast as you'd like in the spring, because that's very weather-dependent as well. So, they may, they may end up with a late spring start. And that's why I wanted to know if we could come to an agreement on the finish date, whether it be June or July. So, my comfort level is up. I still say, share the same concerns as Counselor Morel. But I have confidence that the staff oversight on this job is going to be able to hold the contractor to the terms of the contract and keep our change orders and contract extras to a minimum. So, I'm prepared to recognize the realities of the situation.
Thank you, Debbie Murray-Taylor.
Um, just on the, on the...
Um, just on the, on the, you found locations of the fiber, fiber optics and cables, et cetera. Are we getting them mapped so that the next time this? Fifty years from now, where they go down low, they're on a five inches range between?
Yes, through, through the chair, we're, we're certainly mapping out all, all underground cable as it exists today. What, what's active and what's inactive so that there, there's a much, uh, much improved documentation compared to what we had at the start.
Mr. Parker? Uh, Mr. Cameron?
Was I, uh, was I correct in hearing, uh, David, that November fifteenth of this year was the final completion date of the, the whole road? Or was that just partially?
Uh, November fifteenth was the original completion date for the entire project.
Okay, and they started in what, June?
Uh, they started in July.
So that's about five months and we're now giving them an additional, starting from now, we're giving them eight months. Which seems a little strange to me where they've got, it appears in the picture that they've got a lot of the front work done to around number two and north. And now we're just going to give them another eight months to, uh, to complete the rest of the. I'm still going to support, support most of the recommendation, but, but I'm, I'm just somewhat, somewhat taken back with the, with the additional eight months that we're giving them to complete it. When we only gave them five months originally.
Through, through the chair, thanks. Uh, the, the, the reality of actual construction work time, uh, is about two months. We're, we're, you know, May, May and June is what we're looking for them to, and they'll finish up sometime in November. Unless we have some amazing weather and, and, and they can trudge on into December. But really December, January, February, March, we, we certainly don't want, uh, any construction work going on during, during those winter months, so. I, it's, it appears like it's a long window, but it, it's really a, a short construction season window that we're giving them.
I understand.
Okay, um, deputy clerk, do I have a, a second here?
You do.
Uh, so any further, uh, questions for, uh, staff? Okay, um, the recommendation is that committee recommends that council authorize staff and eastern engineering groups to negotiate a contract extension for the Water Street rehabilitation project. All in favor? All opposed? Uh, the motion carries. Thank you very much. So, we'll try and squeak in item seven F here before we hear from, uh, our delegation from the Lawlesses. So, uh, item seven F is a request to purchase vacant lands and there's a recommendation from staff. Is there a move for the recommendation? Uh, Mr. Cameron, is there a second or the recommendation, Mr. Parker? Madam CAO?
Uh, thank you, councillor. The, uh, the, the request is for a, a more or less sterile one-third acre parcel. That the abutting landowner would like to, uh, purchase it and, and make it part of their existing landholding, which is roughly 10 acres. Uh, the, the property in question was offered for sale through the tax sale process in 2011. I understand from Mrs. Summers that they weren't aware that that was being done. Uh, there were no bids on it in 2011, so it vested to the township. It's basically sitting there not doing anything. This is a little outside our, our land sale policy, which typically would envision something, uh, very valuable that we were offering for sale, like a residential lot or something like that. This, in this case, there is no, uh, very little value to the property. However, I, I certainly suggest that we make sure the public is aware of what we're doing. It's only transparent to do that.
Okay, thank you very much. So, uh, Mr. Grant, you have a question, comment?
Well, I guess, um, and the briefing note kind of speaks to it. The tax sale process is really the public notice that this, these properties are for sale. But that was 2011, we're 2018 and it's kind of a lot of slippage in between. What method do you intend to use to, uh, make this an open and transparent by vestiture? In view of the fact that, you know, it's been kind of seven years since the tax, six years since the tax sale process?
I, I, uh, sorry, Mr. Chair, I would recommend that we follow the, uh, the policy within the, uh, within the bylaw. Which discusses advertising for weeks in the local paper, I believe, as well as on the, uh, website. I'm just looking at the bylaw here to confirm that. Yeah, it has to be advertised, uh, notice to the public, given at least 30 days prior to disposal. In at least two local newspapers, on the website and through the municipal social, social media.
So, so as a follow-up to the chair, uh, so the only parts of the policy that we would, really wouldn't be adhering to would be the appraisal from an appraiser and that kind of thing. Would we, with the offered price that we have in front of us, would that be sufficient to cover the tax arrears that we were trying to recover at the time of the tax sale?
No, not, not exactly, although it's a funny thing because the, uh, in 2011, we were still using the solicitor for tax sale. So there's really only less than a thousand dollars owing in taxes, but by the time we added the legal fees on it, it came up to just under five thousand dollars. If we were doing it today through RealTax, which is the firm that we use for doing that, it, that twenty-five hundred would cover it, so, yeah.
And one final question.
Yep.
Um, did, did the applicants ever get their other property matter? Kind of off the topic, but did they ever get their other property matter? I think it was a question of two properties had merged during the transition. And, uh, they were trying to get them separated again, never get that done?
Yes.
And will this property be attached to one of those?
No.
It won't?
No, this is a separate property again.
Okay, so then this will remain a landlocked property?
Yes, but it's of a size that you might potentially be able to develop off that on the road allowance, et cetera.
Okay, off the unopened road allowance, okay.
Okay, thank you. Deputy Mayor Taylor?
So is a third of a 10 acre sufficient in the village for building another piece of property, another residence?
Uh, we could probably make it work, but the intent is to merge this with the 10 acres, not leave it as a separate property.
Mr. Parker? Mr. Cameron? So, uh, the recommendation is that committee recommends that council defer the property described as concession six, uh, part lot. Twenty-seven Water Street pin as listed, roll as listed surplus to the township. Notify the public of the intended disposition as per the requirement of bylaw, twenty fifteen dash forty-four. And if no other interest is expressed, proceed to sale of the property to Steve and Stephanie Summers. Are there other, uh, questions for staff, any other comments? Okay, uh, all in favor? All opposed? And the motion is carried, thank you very much. So, uh, the time is seven thirty PM and our agenda this evening, we have listed for seven thirty PM, a delegation by Brian, Ben, Kevin and Pat Lawless. Let's see if we have, uh, oh, the Lawless family here. Gentlemen, um, I, I gather your delegation this evening is in relation to the unopened road allowance, Hans Road. And so you have, uh, you have 10 minutes to address the committee.
Well, uh, I guess I've been elected to buy as value here. The mayor, councillors, staff. We don't really have to prepare the marks down the, down the short letter that was sent. Uh, I think that it outlines the, uh, our concerns and, uh, and we feel that the road should be, uh. Well, it's not, it's not a road allowance actually, it's a road that's not being maintained, um, just to clarify that. But why, why should be brought back up to, you know, acceptable, passable level? So, uh, my thought is if we had, uh, if there were any questions that you had. We did have Mr. Grant, uh, take a look at it, uh, a couple of weeks ago. So he would have an idea of what's involved. Here's, uh, as you can see on the letter, uh, the, the land property is wet. And it's actually part of the, uh, the drainage, uh, Mr. Brain had to assess the paid fees on it years ago. When the drain was, uh, lackluster last done. The, uh, our understanding, with much of the letter is that the, uh, is that the road cannot be allowed to act as a dam essentially on the drain, is one thing. But, uh, beyond that, of course, you're aware of the, uh, tower, uh, which we were here through, I guess, a few months ago. With the delegation, uh, we were discussing. Well, actually at that time, we were discussing, um, this as, as a, as a unopened road allowance. I think, uh, that was the way that the tower company was broken it. But, I'd say it's not, that's not due to the state's of road. So, if you have any questions, uh, no clarifications on our part, but, but, uh, yeah.
Okay, thank you, uh, very much. Do any members of the committee have questions for our delegation? Uh, the letter, uh, from Mr. Brian Lawless dated September ninth, two day print, it's in the agenda package, so it opens up in two, two years. Uh, Deputy Mayor Taylor?
Uh, please, Mr. Chair, the, the use of the road in nineteen ninety-nine, um, was that to access, um, property that was otherwise inaccessible? Owned by the person who was, you know, driving the trucks?
No, that was, uh, that was just an instance, uh, that was just an illustration of the, uh, of the fact that the road was, in fact, maintained, you know, to an acceptable degree. Uh, till, well, at that time and then a number of years later. So we were able to get access to it down there in the winter time with a two-wheel drive truck. And with, um, and with, um, timber, timber trucks and, um, trailer behind it too. So it's a, it was, it was acceptable to that degree.
So, to the chair, if I may. This, uh, road really hasn't been maintained, I don't believe, since amalgamation. And, you know, I, I've got the, I've got the feeling that the request is coming forward because of the fact that Shared Networks Canada wants to build the tower there.
Well, that, uh, that has, has given a boost to, of course, uh, you know, that sort of brought it up a little higher on the radar. It's been, the, I mean, it's, it's, it's property that's there, it needs to be accessible, um, or it's, or it's essentially worthless and potentially landlocked.
But, yeah, the, the request is coming at the same time that Shared Networks Canada and, and I guess what I find awkward to work with is the fact that. When we met with Shared Networks Canada, uh, and they were, and, and just to make it clear, they're not, because they're readily regulated, they don't have any obligation. To adhere to our bylaws or our zoning or anything. But they came to us as a matter of courtesy to inform us that, that they were going to build this tower. Uh, at that point, we made it clear to them that, that, that this was an unmaintained road allowance. And that any work that they needed to do to get their tower built would be to their cost, to their expense. And, uh, they seemed at the time, uh, that they left us to fully understand that that was the arrangement that, under which, uh, we would engage with them. And, uh, we do have a policy with regard to these unopened, uh, unmaintained road allowances. And I believe that we provided through the chair, if I may, to the CAO, I believe that we provided Shared Networks Canada with that agreement. And made it very clear that we would need their signature on that agreement before they could commence construction. And, so, do we have that agreement back from Shared Networks Canada yet?
No, sir.
So what stage is their construction plan at?
Uh, I'm sorry, I can't really answer that. It was a two-step process in order to get the cell phone tower, um, located there. One was we required them to, um, accept the fact that the, any improvements to the road allowance were at their own cost. Uh, second was to enter into site line control agreement, which, uh, as you've mentioned, uh, telecommunications towers are not subject to planning act regulations. So, I'm going to say nine times out of 10, the cell phone type, uh, companies are prepared to do that, but occasionally we run into one who is not. But we, we really needed to get the road allowance situation settled before we moved through that site control process.
And that's not been settled. So it, it makes it a bit awkward for us because, um. I mean, they're, my impression when they left us was that they were prepared to incur those costs to their account. On the basis of the fact that they would be deriving revenue from that tower. Now, as owners of the land, I'm, I'm assuming that the landowners would also derive some rental revenue from the tower location. So, do you know what their plans are for construction? Are they waiting for us to do the work?
Well, it's, it's a little bit up in the air at the moment. We're not, yeah, I mean, we're not certain that the tower is going to go, one way or the other regards to the road condition. But it did, it did bring it, uh, as I say, did bring the whole thing forward in our minds that we need to, uh, it's, it's. It's been, uh, maintained for, well, fifteen years or so. And, uh, it needs to be, uh, you know, needs to be maintained because we, well, there are other properties ordered down there too, but they're not here tonight, so, uh, it's us. But as for the tower, um, tower or no tower, we feel that, uh, you know, the road needs to maintain to, you know, to, to, to an accessible degree.
We'll come back here later, okay, yep, go ahead.
Sorry, I was under the impression that there were no homes or anything on, down?
Uh, no.
No?
Uh, no touch.
So. So in nineteen ninety-nine, trucks could pass and, um, they're not, they weren't your trucks, but people were going down?
It was my truck, yeah.
Okay. So you, you were going to your land to get trees or whatever, so you had, you had access. Then it was at that time still an unmaintained road allowance?
No, it was maintained. There was, there was, there was a salt pile down on it and, uh, and it was sort of gravel, you know, gravel and, uh, shot rock and so forth. I think more, more gravel at that time. In rea, in more recent years, and I think it's been since an automation actually, uh, has been loads of shot rock hidden there in the lower spots. But the problem really is the, uh, is the culverts. And, uh, you say that's, that's a drain and, uh, we have a, well, attacking as a dam, there's a high water, uh, situation on the south side now. It's up to the road course and, and across.
Yeah, I, I guess, let's let me sure I understood this correctly. When they were here, the message that we gave them was that, um, we're okay with, with them doing work on that road. So long as other people that were on the road also knew what was going on, but they would have to pay the shot if it was going to happen. So now you're asking that we pay the shot so that?
It's, uh, we feel it's the township's responsibility, the road is, it's, uh, it's, uh, it's a, it's a road that has been allowed to slip into an unmaintained, uh, situation. And actually, I, I don't think that any of us were ever notified that that was going to be, uh, going to be the case.
I'm just going to see if we can get, uh, just get everyone, did you have questions, councillor Smith?
Just, uh, when is the last time that you physically needed to access this road?
Oh, we, well, we were, uh, pre and for, for any kind of nature, nature work?
Well, just any, just give me an example.
Well, I, I ventured down there this year, last year.
Okay, and it was never a concern up until this point?
Uh, it was, it wasn't readily accessible. Let's say it was, uh, this brought it more to a head because, you know, we kind of do a little bit of a sense of urgency because it's, uh, you know, this, this tower, uh, could be happening or could not. It raised it on grade. happening or could not, it raised it on the radar.
So just a, a, their question, and we have this company that's willing to come in and put this tower on and they have to bear the cost of repairing this road. So as a taxpayer, I'm trying to, I'm, I'm trying to understand why we would want to pick up that tab on our tax rate as opposed to letting this company do it. I'm just trying to get, I'm just trying to wrap my head around your thought process.
Well, it's, it's uncertain whether they're going to do the road. We, we don't, we don't know that.
And, and you haven't needed or felt the need to bring it forward to council before now?
No, it hasn't been, you know, it hasn't been a major issue for us. But as I say, it's the property is going to be, is going to be accessible when that road and whether the tower or no they are.
Okay. Mr. Pack, do you have any questions?
Yes, to you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Grant, do you know any history about this?
Through, through the chair, unfortunately, I have some limited history on, on, on the, on that road. Since, since I've taken over the position, I do not know as to, to, to have maintained that. In talking with some of the, the senior staff, as indicated in the 1999 reference, that there was some, some leveling of that, of that road to, to gain access to that woodlot back in around that timeframe, but I, I'm unsure on the, on the consistency of any kind of work done by township forces.
Thank you. Mr. Cameron?
I have nothing, thank you.
Okay. And Counselor Reynolds, did you speak, or have a question? Before I do a second?
The, I can, I empathize with the, the folks in the audience. This is one of the hard parts, it's a sitting councillor that we have, you know, the people you know and see every day, and you have to make a decision where it affects, you know, your heart saying, you know, I empathize with the laws, but your head saying, we've got to look at the interest of the overall township, as, as Counselor Smale is doing. What keeps coming back to me is the fact that we have had more concerns than what, through this bylaw and, and unopened road allowances, that by, by pursuing this matter and, and assisting in your situation, it's going to open up a Pandora's Box. We've got some farmers that have taken responsibility in the past for their unopened road allowances and agreed to the bylaw that they would be fully responsible. And once we do it, in this case, they're going to be not, well, how come I had to pay? How come I have to do it? We had farmers a few years back that did it, one in particular, another one that decided, a big farming operation, said, no, we're not willing to take that responsibility to be responsible for the unopened road allowance. We have a Mr. Y, W.Y., taking responsibility of a road allowance in Crowder Road and so forth recently for the well-being of that. He, he, he's being responsible. The domino effect's going to say, well, if you did it for that group, why can't you do it for us? And, and we've, we've got situations whereby other unopened road allowances, I'm thinking of pipelines or, or gas lines or something, they may be using it and word gets out, you know, there's, there's this aspect with regard to local governments treating people fairly. And, and you know, you can't do it for one without the other. And we've got a situation of an unopened road allowance in County Road 44 that's caused this havoc and so forth. Like, I can see those folks saying, well, one person wanted to buy it or something, but then it was landlocked another and we, that didn't go through. And they, and they'd be saying something similar along those lines. Well, you did it there, how about here? So I don't know if you've seen the briefing note or if I'm getting ahead of myself when they were coming to number K, that if we start, the policy implications of this are phenomenal, that if we start fixing this road, and it's, it's estimated here in, in the briefing note we have, I don't know if you've seen it, it could be tens of thousands. Now, we do that, let's just say, and we've got the ATV club here, they want it, because this farmer's taking responsibility for the road allowance, they want further road allowances from us, and they've talked about us seeking assistance for them to build a bridge over a wet spot and so forth in this new route. So you can, you see where I'm getting with all the implications here with, that are following along with these unopened road allowances? And now we're in negotiations to another situation, and I can't relay, relay that because it's in camera, of, with surveys and discussing with other people, you know, road allowances that they're using. And we're trying to say, you're using them, you know, they're ours with official survey, and they hear this, they're going to say, well, why don't you fix them for us to do our farming with too? Like, I, I just see a whole big snowball. And to give you an example of what we're talking about here, I mean, we have to raise taxes. If this is in the tens of thousands and all these others start saying, well, I want the same as this happen, $50,000 is a 1% tax rate increase for our residents. And if we start compounding this, that's estimated to be that, it, it, it snowballs. And that's, and we as a council sitting around here and worrying at tax time, you know, we sat here at one time arguing the budget about a, a 1% tax rate increase that amounted to $12 a year. And we, we, we spend a lot of time wanting to both keep taxes low. And I see this as, and I'm not trying to be facetious, that it has bigger implications. And that's, that's what I'm trying to get my head around. My heart's with you, but my head's attached to you. I, I don't, yeah?
Thank you very much. The mayor has a question and then the deputy mayor.
I guess, I'm going to put it, I'm going to put it this way. We had to put a policy in place about how, how we were going to deal with these unopened road allowances quite some time ago. It was in 2015 that we finally put the policy in place. The reason that we put it in place was because we were getting a multitude of these kinds of questions. Now, for us to, it's such bad timing, because for us to now go against our own policy because of this request, the perceptions are completely bad. Because it, it would appear that what we're basically doing is subsidizing Shared Networks Canada, which is going to derive revenue from that tower. Now, I know through the chair that the speaker indicates that they're not entirely sure that the tower will go ahead, but that's certainly not an impression that we were left with, because we were told that they already had contracts in place with at least two of the big telecoms. So I'm, I have the firm impression that this tower is going ahead, provided that they satisfy our, our, our policy with regard to maintaining the road. So I'm really worried that the perception is going to be, number one, that we've vitiated or, or went against our own policy and ended up subsidizing Shared Networks Canada. It just doesn't look right. And so I, I'm having to stick with the staff recommendation that, that we adhere to the current policy here, because otherwise we make ourselves look, we make ourselves look bad. And unfortunately, you folks are sort of caught in the middle of that, as I can, Mr. Chair.
So, so I, I have two questions for staff, and then the, the speaker had a comment and then the deputy mayor. If road maintenance was being done on that portion of road, is, is it that the road, that we were maintaining a private road, or is that we then declared the road an unopened road allowance?
Unmaintained.
Unmaintained.
To my knowledge, the road has never been officially opened beyond railroad tracks as part of the township's road network.
Okay.
If there was some gravel put down or some sort of maintenance done, may have been, who knows? The road superintendent of the day may have chosen to put his folks to work out there, we don't know.
Right.
But to my knowledge, it's never been part of the road network.
Okay. My second question is, if the implication for the, this work is in the magnitude of the tens of thousands of dollars, and it is not, to my understanding, budgeted, is our council in a position at this time to authorize unbudgeted work?
No.
So, so just as a point of information, gentlemen, the Ontario Municipal Act during an election, based on the number of councillors that are seeking election or not, we're in what's called a lame duck period. So if you found concurrence from this group that, yep, yep, we're going to fix the road, we can't, we can't actually make that decision, because it's not part of our 2018 budget. So this, this, the, this question of whether or not the work can happen would likely have to, we'd have to table it until December for the newly elected council to make the decision, because we're, we're not, during an election period, we're, we're not able to, based on our current composition, approve expenditures outside of the budget. So you had a, you had a question or a comment, sir?
Yeah, I just wondered whether we could get some clarification. As I mentioned in, in the brief letter and, and when I was dressing earlier, the, this is the property, we say property, that is part of the, has been assessed as, for drainage. So the drain crosses that road. And I would like to get clarification on whether the, you know, the road can allow, can be allowed to block the drain essentially, in this road.
Drainage questions are, are the most common and the most interesting of my four years on municipal council, I never would have thought.
Drainage and unopened road allowances.
Mr. Grant?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair. It, it is somewhat difficult. I did touch base with our drainage superintendent regarding those, those concerns. And the, the initial findings would suggest that the property owners were assessed the benefit under the South Branch Municipal Drain. And however, just because they were assessed the benefit to that drain does not mean that they have been granted drainage rights. Township would be under no obligation to maintain any part of the road since it's not part of the actual designed and constructed drainage system. However, I'm still waiting for, if there's any additional information regarding that from the drainage superintendent.
Okay, thank you. Deputy Mayor Taylor, thank you for your question.
Just wondering, gentlemen, if Shared Networks was aware that you were going to approach us with this question?
Yeah, well, we, we copied them on the emails that we sent you.
But you had, you didn't, but prior to copying on the email, did you discuss with them that you were, that...
Well, we mentioned that we were going to, you know, approach the council.
Any, any other questions? So we'll conclude, unless you had a final comment, we'll conclude the, the committee's questions for our delegation, and thank you very much. So we will, we will move through our agenda on to item 7G. The item, the focus here on this evening is item 7K, and we'll, we'll see, we'll see how that pans when we get there. So thank you, thank you very much. So item, just get up to where we're going here. Item 7G, Assume Albert Street. So we have a mover, councillor Smale, and seconded by the mayor. Any comment from staff? No, pretty, pretty straightforward? Okay, so a housekeeping item, go ahead, Mr. Mayor.
Well, yeah, it, it appears to be straightforward, but again, just pointing out that this street, Albert Street, has been brought up to the full municipal standard before we pass the bylaw to assume it. So, I mean, the developer in that particular subdivision has obviously spread the cost of that, building that roadway over the cost, over the number of lots. And so it isn't as if we're taking over something that is in half state of repair, it's brought up to full municipal standard before we assume it. And I just want to make sure that that's said in public.
Okay, thank you for that. Anything further? All in favor? Carrie?
Excuse me. Item 7H is a recommendation concerning the Johnstown ATV club. Is there a mover for the recommendation? Counselor Smale, is there a second?
Counselor Brown.
Yep. Mr. Grant, did you want to speak to that?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The recommendation is, is, is only to remove the east unmaintained road allowance and provide a small section of Fitzton Road that connects to that west unmaintained road allowance. The club has requested, I believe that it's six, seven additional roads. And as, as, as always, the, the alternative is that council could provide them with some or all of those particular additional roads.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
Well, as you know, I have some concerns, because I believe all of these additionals are use of our road shoulders, are they not, in our, in our existing roadways? And it's been brought to my attention, and, and I'd like to have this clarified before the, before the bylaw comes forward at, at council, depending on what happens with the recommendation. But it's been brought to my attention that, for some reason, and I'm not a member, so I don't know, the Eastern Ontario ATV clubs have divorced themselves from the parent organization called the Ontario Association of ATV Clubs. And my concern is that the larger parent organization, which was called, if I have the name correctly, the Ontario Association of ATV Clubs, they were carrying a blanket insurance policy for liability, I believe it was somewhere around 10 million or ex, or in excess of $10 million. Now, so my question is, with the Eastern Ontario ATV clubs disassociating themselves from that larger group, do they lose the coverage of that policy, that larger Ontario policy? And if so, what liability coverage do we have in place to protect us with some accident occurring on our shoulders? That's the major issue for me at this point. I have the other issue, of course, the smaller issue, which is that I haven't seen a great deal of new trail construction. So far, all of the things that we're being asked to approve are basically riding, riding our shoulders. So I'll just let that concern hang in the air until I can get a, a read on that.
Okay. Counselor Reynolds?
Well, I just, I, I think I, I concur with the recommendation by staff, the director of operations and the CIO, that they just give this little jump there since the one roadway is being closed up and the line is, the line is situation open, and that alleviates a lot of these other roads that were asked for, because I know we had concerns in the beginning. And I looked at it and, and it said that in the beginning, with the original bylaw, they had 25 kilometers. We amended it in 2017, they got 20, then they went up to 29. Now they wanted a massive, massive amount of our roads to ride on, which is not being recommended here, which would have increased their, their ATVs on the roads to 67 kilometers, that's massive. Like, to me, that's too much. And so I, I think the staff has said, okay, yes, you've got that unopened road allowance closed up, here's another little section for you to do, this will appease you and solve your problem, and you'll use a little bit more of our roads. Otherwise, it would have been, would have just been astronomical. So I'm, I'm willing to support the emotion, I, I commend staff for the insights they brought forward. And I just did a little thing... thing. I was, I was looking at the ATV, ATV club and, and a big, big picture and I, and I thought of the old expression, you give them an inch, they want a mile. And then I did a little calculation, um, a mile is, uh, one inch, a mile is, uh, sixty-three thousand, three hundred and forty inches. So, that's quite a, quite a big span, uh, in that little expression. So, I, I, I compacted it into a, a centimeters. I said, give them a centimeter and they want a kilometer. So, I did that and basically they're expanding to sixty-seven. It's, uh, one, one centimeter to sixty-seven kilometers amounts to six billion, seven hundred million, uh, centimeters. So, I think the ask was too astronomical. So, uh, I'm going to vote, uh, I'm going to vote in favor of the staff's presentation.
Okay.
You do love them.
Councillor Smale?
Um, so I'm, I'm in favor of the recommendation as it sits. I just, I'm talking into, to what the mayor has, has mentioned. Um, I'm trying to get my head back into the game here now. Thanks, Jerry, for your, your analysis there. Can we not, as a council, request a copy of, uh, of their insurance and a updated version of their road trail network yearly so that we can keep an eye on what's going on? Can we request that as?
Through you, Mr. Chair, uh, I'm sure we can request insurance proof. Um, and their trail network is updated regularly on their website. It's a pretty easy thing to monitor.
But again, it's, it's, it, it's, if it's not in front of us sometimes at the council table, we forget to follow up on that. So, so my, with the new council coming in, I'm just wondering if it would be beneficial, even if they, that went into our, um, packages that we get.
Court.
Thank you. Um, and definitely proof of insurance to allow them to continue to use our road allowances as they build their network and as they get bigger and, and work towards their goals of making the trails better for, for the area, which is what the initial goal is, but I'm, again, concerned as well as the area with insurance.
So, uh, do we have concurrence that we'd like to request, that committee, uh, would like staff to request a copy of the insurance certificate prior to this coming forward to council should have passed? Concurrence from, from the committee? Okay, any further speakers in motion? Mr. Cameron, Mr. Bakewood? So, we have the staff recommendation that committee recommends that council amend Schedule A of bylaw twenty fifteen dash twenty-eight to remove the east unmaintained road allowance connecting Piston Crowder Road to the map and add a small section of Piston Road connecting to the west unmaintained road allowance. All in favor? And all opposed? That's carried, thank you. So, the next item, seven I, it comes forward from a previous meeting and, uh, I have a mover and a secondary, and that's that municipal council support the Johnstown ATV Club in the altering of the trail networks to include the use of Crowder Road in order to connect the trails as well as new additions to the trail network, such as new bridge to cross flat areas on property currently owned by the township.
This was from their last delegation.
Yes.
Yes, we all found the trail back.
Yep. So, does the previous motion satisfy that? Move.
There is a, there's a mover.
Yeah, yeah.
There is, it came forward, mover and a secondary, um, from that last meeting.
Yep.
Can they withdraw it?
Move.
Yeah.
Movers, councillor Smale and the secondary's councillor.
I think that, that the first one covers this, so I don't think there's anything to do anything with it.
The mover would like to withdraw the secondary, I'll pick first.
Okay, so withdraw?
Withdraw.
Yes.
Okay, we'll move to item, uh, seven J and that's the vehicle maintenance policy review. With the pictures. Saved by the bell. Do you need to go?
I, I do not, I just, uh, per not my phone.
Okay. Uh, item seven J is the vehicle maintenance policy review and, um, this is information.
Right, and, and so we already have a, a very robust, uh, maintenance policy and then I, I see it here.
No, gentlemen. Thank you.
I, I see it here, uh, given back to us, so I think this policy has served us well since twenty fourteen and, uh, I know that I had a bit of a concern that when I saw the, um, when I saw the equipment replacement data sheets attached to it because I didn't want us to be mistaken that somehow these replacement data sheets were, um, part of the policy. They're, they're, I, I would see them as, not addendums, but, um, how shall I say this? Kind of tracking, tracking devices rather than, um, rather than providing direction. So, provided we understand that all we're doing at this point is reviewing the policy, which is, uh, just the twenty fourteen dash thirty-three bylaw, uh, that's all we're doing here, just receiving this as a, as a sort of a review mechanism.
Uh, okay. Did you have anything that you wanted to speak to, uh, Mr. Grant in your report? Did I, did I already ask you that, sorry? If I'm, if I'm browbeating you, just tell me. We want answers.
No, you did not, Mr. Chair. So, ju- just to clarify that the, um, uh, the equipment replacement program and the, the, the individual data sheets are just, uh, additional information that is over and above the, uh, the maintenance policy. It was just, uh, hopefully in order that, uh, committee when reviewing, they would, they, they would get a picture of what the truck looked like so they could, uh, you know, sort of wrap their heads around the, the vehicles that, uh, we, we were talking about when we, when we discussed, uh, Truck Eight with the, with the repairs previously, uh, I'm, I sense that there was some misunderstanding of the, the size of the vehicle, so it was just an attempt to, uh, to, to give you a, a little better layout of, of what equipment we have.
Okay. So, yes?
Through the chair, through your chair. Uh, this, all of this ties into the asset management philosophy that we're, we're doing and so forth and the, you know, the long-term capital, uh, of, of replacement vehicles and so forth. I, I'm assuming that's all inter, interrelated and interconnected and I, would I be correct on that?
Through, through the chair, yeah. The, the sample replacement program would be in line with the asset management plan and, and the estimated useful life. Obviously, it, um, it, it is reviewed and looked at and may, may be adjusted, extended, whatever the case may be, depending on the, uh, on the piece of equipment and what we have. So, here, what we've, what we tried to show you with the, with the equipment replacement program was that, uh, we could get a couple of our vehicles on that twelve-year window, which we estimate the useful life of the, uh, of, of the tandem and signal axle vehicles, just as a, just as a sample to kind of get the head, head around it.
Okay, thank you. Okay, anything else? Deputy Mayor Taylor?
Um, the, just to, on the equipment replacement program, and which is, as you say, a sample, many moons ago, we used to see something like this that would have each year a certain amount of money being placed in reserve for purchase of each truck. So, what I see here with this is the, is the final cost of each truck within, within the year. So, is that how staff is, is bringing this forward in terms of budgeting? Is it a full amount per vehicle each year within the budget or is it, is there another sheet similar to this that shows the amount put into reserve each year for each truck?
Um, through the, yeah, through, through, through the chair, at, at this stage, uh, I, I would not say that there is a, uh, X, X amount assigned to each vehicle, put away each budget year, uh, but the, naturally, the plan, uh, forward with, with, with a program of that nature would be when you, when you replace that vehicle, you would know in X amount of years, you would be in need of replacing it and you should be putting aside X amount.
Our asset management program-
Yeah.
Tells us how long we amortize the vehicle-
Exactly.
And our reserves should be commensurate to the-
Correct.
-amortization of the vehicles.
Correct.
So, there is a tie-in right now in existence?
There, there, there is a tie-in with reserves, but I, I would say that it's not descriptive enough for each particular individual vehicle.
But this is step one. Next council has a lot of work to do with that.
Okay, anything else on this? Okay, perfect. Thank you very much, uh, for, for that. Uh, item seventy K is the unopened road allowance. Uh, there's a recommendation that, uh, committee recommends that council adhere to the current policy as outlined in bylaw twenty fifteen dash five-two with respect to the request for township to support, cover cost of upgrading the unopened road allowance. As I said before, uh, through my question to the CAO, um, I don't believe council is in a, committee's in a position to, to deviate because we can anticipate-
Move to, uh, support the recommendation.
Okay, we have a mover and a secondary from the deputy. Uh, all in favor? All opposed? That's carried. And perhaps by December first, there'll be a new tower being installed. No?
Sometimes I say that.
Well, they'd be building the, they'd be building their own road. They'd be building their own road.
Okay, so I- Before we leave this, so can I, um, ask? We've, we've given Shared Networks Canada the, um, document to sign, uh, in order for them to do the work. Can we follow up with that doc, with them tomorrow or as soon as possible to get them to make a commitment here and perhaps convey to them, uh, the results of the discussion here this evening? And, um, I, I would like to point it out to them that for us to have acquiesced on the request that we received here tonight would be perceived totally as a benefit to Shared Networks Canada, the major beneficiary, and we're just not in a position to do that, pledged under nobody. Not true.
Uh, councillor, first, the motion. Anything from the table? Thank you. Uh, the mayor's support, Mr. Mayor, do you have a report?
As a matter of fact, I don't.
You can say, I'm relieved you can say that.
You hear what she said? No.
So, uh, question period. Uh, thank you for your attendance this evening, gentlemen and ma'am. Uh, do you have any questions for committee based on the agenda of this evening?
Quite learning experience.
You have no idea yet.
Well, the first step is learning it, the second step is unlearning it, so it's four, four years of bad habits. Um, and I'm kidding again. Uh, so the next, we have a closed session and, uh, item eleven A, I have, uh, previous in the meeting disclosed a pecuniary interest, um, and will request that the mayor chair that portion of the meeting.
So, we have like the motion.
And, uh, I will-
Okay, I have, I have the motion.
Excuse myself.
Okay, uh, it's moved by myself, designated by Mayor Sale. That committee of the whole proceeds into closed session at, uh, ten sixteen or ten seventeen?
Eight, eight.
Eight, 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 sixteen, is it? Okay, sixteen, we end. In order to address the matter pertaining to, uh, the receiving of advice that is subject to solicitor client privilege, including communications necessary for that purpose, specifically the JRDR drain and minutes of the closed session dated June nineteenth of twenty eighteen.
All in favor of the motion? Motion is carried. And so-
Moved by myself, designated by Mr. Bakewood, that closed meeting is now adjourned, open meeting of committee on hold is now resumed at eight forty.
Okay, and so this is the motion to move on to closed session. All in favor? Motion is carried. So, then, what do I do with it? First question I'm asking is for the approval of the minutes, uh, of the meeting of June the, oh my God, ten minutes, I've lost it.
Yeah, you got it.
June, of June the eighteenth. Who, who did I say?
No, it's Mark and Jerry.
Okay, moved by Mark and seconded by, yeah, I guess.
Go ahead.
Go ahead. We have three minutes of June twentieth of the meeting.
Yeah, Mark.
Luke by myself, the committee of the whole approves minutes of the closed session of June eighteenth, two thousand and eighteen, that was seconded by-
Councillor Brown.
Okay.
I'll just take that and I'll pass that down.
I might just put my name on here.
You should probably do that. Put Jerry's on, he won't mind. There's some scratch on there, we won't know again.
Okay, all right, all in favor of the motion? Motion is carried, most minutes are approved. All right, now, further reporting out, the, uh, committee received the report, the final report from Alton Al concerning the legal work that was required on the township, on the matter of the Township of Veteransburg Cardinal versus Robert Carmichael et al., uh, the James Riley DeWitt Richter Municipal Drain. And, uh, final report having been received, the committee, uh, well, committee received and, and accepted the report and then asked staff to review with Robinson Consulting, uh, the state of the work on the four other projects that Mr. Robinson's firm is involved with. That's that. So, now the chair is looking for a motion to adjourn.
I have it, uh, Mr. Mayor. Uh, moved by myself and seconded by, okay, uh, councillor Smale. Uh, that the committee does now adjourn at, uh, eight fifty-two. Correct?
Those, those in favor?
All in. Motion is carried.